There needs to be desperate people for this economy, just for the capitalist way that we approach things to continue to shut down. If you can pay people very little to be desperate to take that nothing job, then you can continue to exploit them. Exploitation is the basis for why we've gotten anywhere in the schedule from the very beginning. So we need to keep that churn going. It's devastating.
Uh, 100%. Um, I mean, and this is obviously also the reason that we have to look, the reason that Republicans hate this stuff, the reason they want to put quote, everyone back to work is because they know that social programs actually work, they actually help people, and that pretty soon we're gonna have to, we're coming for them and we're coming for their wealth, wealth and all the, the taxes that they're not paying, right? Like, we don't even have to raise the taxes on the rich, you know, shout out to the dress. But if we actually, if the IRS went after the wealthy to pay their fair share, we could make up what was, I don't know, like billions of dollars would be streaming into the economy, right? Um, and so that's the thing, they, Republicans know, they can't roll back Medicaid even though they tried. They can't roll back Medicare even though they tried. Social Security, everyone loves Social Security. So if you get something like what's in this reconstruction, uh, excuse me, reconciliation bill that's coming down the pike, 3.5 trillion dollars, if you get expanded child tax credits, sorry, that was in the American Families Plan, expanded child tax credits, but in this new plan, if you lower the, the Medicare age to the 60 instead of 65, if you start paying and helping home care workers so people don't have to pay out of pocket for their sick relatives, that's gonna be hard to put back in the bag because they're popular and they work.
Yep. Once you get a taste of that, people are gonna be like, well, where's my American dream? Because that's part of it that we're not getting right now. If you give them a little bit of the dream, they're gonna be like, how about we make this a current reality? They don't want it.
100%. Uh, JR Jackson on a Wednesday, thank you so much for being here. Uh, I'm Francesca Fiorentini, this has been so lovely. Um, hey, listen to the-
You should like come back tomorrow or something and do it again.
I'll be back tomorrow and you guys should also watch me on, uh, The Bituation Room, uh, and listen to that podcast as well. But until then, stay safe out there, stay staying out there and slay out there. Bye.
All right, welcome. It's indisputable. I'm your host Rashad Richard. It is good to be with you all again. I missed you yesterday, but you were in the very capable hands of the big homie, JR. He did a remarkable job. Honored to have him drive the Ferrari, okay? And David Schuster, listen, these guys are pros all day, killing it. But I'm back. Now, I can't tell you exactly what I was doing today, but something big is going to happen in about two weeks and I can do the big reveal. But I will say this, because I love you all so much, that I did not stay away for two days like I was supposed to. I hopped my behind on the plane at three o'clock in the morning to come back to the studio at 7:00 AM so I can do pre-production with my team and be with you right here live. So if I'm a little loopy today, it is because I have been up for 24 hours straight, okay? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, my first story for today, in a minute, in a minute, uh, breaking down news of the day, we got Dr. Jonathan, uh, Jonathan Metz, so he's been with us before, brilliant guy, professor, remarkable individual, gun violence expert and professor at Vanderbilt, uh, and author of Dying of Whiteness will be with us in just a moment. Uh, and we have Brad Palumbo, Feed.org correspondent, National Review contributor. Uh, he wants to end all federal unemployment socialism versus capitalism will be part of the debate and also the, as they call it, Joe Biden mandate for COVID vaccines. It's not a mandate, but that's part of the argument. All right, ladies and gentlemen, first story. Tucker Carlson has admitted he lies on TV, okay? Let's just go to his words first.
The real problem with the withdrawal from Afghanistan was not terrible decisions that the Biden administration made or the Pentagon made, or that our entire foreign policy establishment bipartisan made for 20 years. Now, the real problem is some guy in Alabama who's got unauthorized views. It's like, maybe you should stop attacking these people because they are the weakest people in our society and you're doing it in order to defend like the people in our society, but also the richest and the most powerful. You're the Praetorian Guard for the most powerful people. Like, how can you live with yourself? I mean that. That is so immoral.
So what do you, what do you think the answer to that question is? How do they, when, when you have to cover some idiotic thing that Stelter said or Cuomo, just these, these clown people, when you have to cover it, right? Or Don Lamont, as you call him, like, what, how do you think they live with themselves at this point when they just lie again and again and we have the internet to expose the lies? This isn't 20 years ago when you were on CNN and we couldn't expose things. We can expose it now and they still do it.
Well, it's, I guess I would ask myself, like, I mean, I lie. If I'm really cornered or something, I lie. I really try not to. I try never to lie on TV. I try, I just don't, you know, I don't like lying. I certainly do it, you know, out of weakness or whatever. But to systematically lie like that without asking yourself, like, why am I doing this?
These guys are bashing liars. And in the middle of bashing liars, he distinguishes himself from other liars by admitting, yes, he too is a prolific liar and he lies on television, but listen, don't blame Tucker. He lies only when he is cornered. He lies only out of weakness, you weak individual. I'm not the one calling you weak, damn it. You called yourself weak. Tucker Carlson admits that he has lied on television. I've actually uncovered at least one of those lies. We all know that he has misrepresented the truth as part of his brand. It gets even deeper. Now, here's one of those instances where I know for sure that Tucker Carlson was lying on TV now. Here it is.
I can say that actually you and I went to dinner about two years ago. Your wife was there and I brought a friend of mine, you'll remember her, and she was actually threatened by the FBI, told that if she wouldn't cop to the fact that somehow I was involved in some pay for play scheme, uh, that she could face trouble and so-
Tucker, is this true?
I, I don't remember the, the woman you're speaking of or the context at all, honestly, but I, I would like to know who-
He was cornered. He's a weak man. He doesn't like lying on TV. He just, you know, but he is not systematically lying and, and that's the real issue here, okay? Uh, breakdown, Fox News host admitted his relationship with the truth sometimes waivers as he was interviewed by fellow conservative media host Dave Rubin. Here's what's really ironic, y'all, okay? The first time Tucker Carlson tells the truth is the first time he actually admits to lying. This, I don't, I don't know anybody else who shares this first ever, other than Tucker. Um, it happened after Rubin asked Carlson how CNN employees like Chris Cuomo and Brian Stelter live with, uh, themselves, uh, live with themselves when they just lie again and again, and we have the internet to expose the lies. So there's your context, right? Carlson seemed to take the question personally, to the point where he made this confession about his own relaxed relationship with factual accuracy, and then he goes on to what you just heard. Now, this is not the first admission of him lying. As a matter of fact, it's certified in court documents. Carlson's admission of lying isn't exactly news. Why? In fact, Fox News won a defamation lawsuit that was filed against Carlson last year by successfully arguing that given Mr. Carlson's reputation, any reasonable viewer arrives with an appropriate amount of skepticism about the statement he makes. In other words, they sued Tucker for defamation. Fox News defends him in court and the defense is, you know, brubby line. That's the defense. Doc, you work in the psychological arts, my friend. What made Tucker Carlson tell the truth for the first time and snitch on himself about being a liar?
Well, there was something very confessional about this whole moment, right? And, and in other words, like, and it was from a psychological perspective, quite revealing, right? Because he's accusing other people of lying.
Right.
Um, and then he's like, oh, I lie too, but then he was, as you say, distinguishing his own lies from the lies of other people. Now, I, I think, I think it's fair to say, on one hand, you know, oh, we all know, people are casting the news, it's not just about factual information. But I think the issue here is, um, first of all, of course, people do rely on people like Tucker Carlson for a lot of factual information, information about the pandemic, about the vaccine, about all these factors. And so there is a kind of basis of kind of truthful information that I think people should adhere to. Um, so I think that's part of it. Um, the other part is after getting the invite for your show, I went down the rabbit hole. I, I watched the whole, I watched the whole interview. Um, and, and what was interesting about Carlson's kind of formulation is his lies were in the service of a greater ideal, which in, in his interview was about protecting, um, poor white people who are getting, get kind of beaten by the system. They're the most kind of helpless kind of people. Um, and so there was this idea that basically his lies were in the service of a bigger ideal, which was a very, just, I mean, watch the interview, a very racial ideal. Um, and so he does this as a way of kind of putting his position toward a kind of racial politics of defending poor white people who, as he says, are getting kind of the worst shaft of the system. And so he's also almost kind of playing the race card in terms of defending his lying in a particular way, which I, I thought was fascinating. I mean, it really was, as a psychiatrist, a pretty fascinating 45-minute session into the mind of Tucker Carlson.
Yeah, maybe one day your class will use this as a case study, um, for sanity. All right. Uh, a Philadelphia woman will now be paid $2 million because she was beaten by officers and separated from her child. Let's put up a picture first of what they did to this young lady, Rakeel Young. Let's put up a picture of Ms. Young. I want you to see this, okay? She was innocent. She did nothing wrong, committed no crime. Let me give you some background. This happened in the city of Philadelphia. They will now have to pay Ms. Young $2 million because she was pulled from her car, beaten by officers. Why did this happen? Because she's driving unknowingly into a large demonstration. She's not part of the demonstration. She's not a protester. She's a mother trying to get her family home. And so she decides to turn around. Well, the cops weren't having that. Oh, no, no, no. Obviously this is a threat, right? Uh, she's a nursing aide. Ms. Young was headed home in the early morning hour, hours of October 27th, 2020, when she unknowingly drove into a large protest over the killing, the police killing of Walter Wallace Jr. She tried to make a three-point turn to get away from the tense scene when officers smashed out her windows with their batons. Both she and her nephew were beaten, but neither were charged. Her hearing impaired toddler lost his hearing aids during the incident. I want to remind you, this is a protest about police misconduct. She's not even part of the protest. She's trying to avoid the protest because she's trying to get her family home. She has a baby that's hearing impaired. She has her nephew in the vehicle. She's a woman, she's a mother. She's just trying to get home. I want to show you a still picture of the police surrounding her car. Now that's scary. Anyone would be terrified in that situation. Here's another photo of her toddler being taken away from her SUV. Remember, she committed no crime here, okay? And I'm gonna show you again what they did after breaking her window and forcing her out the car, what they did to Ms. Young. Here's a picture of Ms. Young again. Victim of police brutality just because she was near a protest against police brutality. That's culture. That's the culture of policing. There's no sensitivity here. There's no care for human life. They're not concerned about the children being inside of this car or a toddler who has a hearing impairment? No, did not matter. Uh, while the toddler was separated from his mother, a photo was taken of him with the police. The photo would be posted by a police Facebook group. So let me tell you what they did. They separate the mother. This is how diabolical these guys are. They separate the mother from the child. The child is, is now just wandering around, no shoes, can't hear, hearing aids are lost somewhere, and they are beating up this child's mother. And so a cop is carrying around the child. Show the picture. The National Fraternal Order of Police posted this picture of what they created, the cops created this right here. And they say the child was lost during the violent riots in Philadelphia, wandering around barefoot in an area that was experiencing complete lawlessness. The only thing this Philadelphia police officer cared about in that moment was protecting this child. We are not your enemy. We are the thin blue line and we are the only thing standing between order and anarchy. Hail to the gnaw. You are the anarchy. The reason why that child is barefoot and wandering around is because of those lawless-ass cops who broke that window, beat up that mother, beat up that nephew, allowed that toddler to roam around with no shoes on and could not hear anybody talking to him, and then you use it for propaganda. No apology, propaganda for you. Now the city has to pay this family $2 million. Um, Doc, I'm sorry, man. Stuff like this infuriates me.
Because it's infuriating. I mean, it highlights all of these bigger issues. I mean, certainly the issue in itself, I mean, you've just shown pictures of a, of a, of a crime, a, a crime against three innocent victims. And so in that sense, um, there's the crime itself, which is infuriating. And I think, I think fury is, is a justifiable response, absolutely. You know, these are people who are helpless, a nurse's aide and her family just trying to get home. So there's part of it, but there's two other layers here, right? That, that make it even, even more upsetting. One is, of course, she was guilty, not just because she's a motorist, she's a black motorist, um, that, that's driving by. And so there was this kind of guilt of association, she's linked to the protesters. Um, and then she's in a car, right? And so think about what happened after all of this is happening is that, you know, states across the country legalized people driving into protesters, right? And so the, the kind of symbol of a car in relation to a protest is something that also was very charged because there were all these laws that happened across the country that basically said, it's okay to drive into protesters in, at times like this. And so in a way, her, you know, just the, the layers of kind of racial politics surrounding this and what it means, and also what it means in the context. This happened October 2020 and since that time, it's kind of like protesting while black and driving while black. These are both things that are being pathologized by the system, um, while at the same time enabling the rights of white motorists to basically run over protesters, um, you know, in different situations. And so there are levels of fury and frustration here that are much bigger than just the actual event itself, which again is, is pretty horrific.
Well said. Let me drop some of these names. Um, Sergeant David Chisholm, a 13-year veteran who worked in the 26th Police District, was fired for violating Department of Policies, including inappropriate communications or conduct while on duty, use of force, and lying or attempting to deceive during a departmental investigation. Police Officer Darren Cardos, a seven-year veteran who worked in the 19th Police District, was fired for excessive use of force and physical abuse with a baton. 15 other officers are currently awaiting disciplinary proceedings. 15 other cops, one woman, a baby, and a nephew. Okay? Um, I gotta highlight this story. Uh, Dr. Fauci had to literally go on CNN to debunk Nicki Minaj. Um, let's play the video.
Pop star Nicki Minaj tweeted yesterday that she's not vaccinated, she's doing her own research, and then she shared an anecdote I found rather unbelievable, to be honest, about alleged side effects that her cousin's friend supposedly experienced in Trinidad. I wouldn't normally even ask you about this. I, I want you to address what she said because for anyone out there who has any questions about this, Dr. Fauci, is there any evidence that the Pfizer, the Moderna, or the J&amp;J vaccines cause any reproductive issues in men or women?
The answer to that, Jake, is a resounding no. There's no evidence that it happens, nor is there any mechanistic reason to imagine that it would happen. So the answer to your question is no. There is a lot of misinformation, mostly on social media, and the only way we know to counter miss and disinformation is to provide a lot of correct information and to, to essentially debunk these kinds of claims, which, you know, may be, you know, innocent on her part. I'm not, you know, blaming her for anything, but she should be thinking twice about propagating information that really has no basis as except a, a one-off anecdote, and that's not what science is all about.
Now, let me say this very clearly, okay? What Nicki Minaj said is untrue, okay? She's making claims based on what somebody told her, this is what we call, uh, what they say. People do, do this all the time. They say, well, they say, and they make up something or repeat something. Well, who in the hell, who is they? Okay? Right? If they are not connected to a medical background, to a scientific research background, or infectious disease background, I don't give a damn who they are, all right? I know how to follow science, which is called the field of study. Now, I'm not doing this segment to bash Nicki Minaj. She's an artist and she is well within her rights to say what she feels is true for her, and it was in a conversation format. But I will say this to all artists, and I know a lot of them personally, you have a significant platform. What you say is not in the silo. Your words do not exist in a bubble. They influence masses. With that level of platform comes a significant level of responsibility. Doc, we got about one minute. What are your thoughts?
I think we live really in a crazy time right now. And if, two years ago, you would have told me that I'd be on TV, talking about a segment where, uh, Dr. Fauci, Nicki Minaj, and the word testicles appeared together, um, I would say, man, what planet did I live on, I mean, land on? That's kind of where we're at right now. Um, I thought Fauci actually handled this incredibly well.
Yeah.
He did not go after the messenger. He was very empathic. He said, you know, she might believe this, let's have a conversation about it. He said, he was not an attack. He basically talked about social responsibility, about platform, and I also think he used it as an opportunity to address some of the misinformation. I mean, there is all this fake information out there about reproduction and vaccines.
Yeah.
And so he used, he used an opportunity to basically say, there is actually no mechanism that connects these, in a way that I, I hope was not, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what Nicki Minaj's response was, but it did not seem to me to be condescending. It seemed to be, let's have a conversation and dispel some of, some of these myths.
Agreed. We got more on the other side. It's indisputable. Stick and stay.
I'm back to gaslighting. Didn't you and I talk about gaslighting on Old School?
Probably.
That boss gaslit all his female employees. People who manipulate others like that make you feel like you're the weirdo. Why won't you punch yourself in the face? What is wrong with you? And you're like, oh my God, I feel so bad. Why didn't I just punch myself in the face and poke my eye out? Now I'm 47 and I just figured that out like earlier this year.
Figured out somebody was doing it to you or that you-
That it was a, that it would have been happening my whole life and I didn't realize it.
Right, right.
Welcome to Indisputable. I'm your host, Dr. Rashad Richard. We got a lot happening today. And what do we do on this show? We tell the truth. You know why we tell the truth? Because the truth is simply indisputable.
Rashad, great to be here. Congratulations on the new show, and I gotta let everybody know that Rashad and I go way back.
Here's the pattern that we see in all of these Karen stories. They think they own stuff they do not own. Now, where does that come from? I don't know, maybe slavery. Maybe they think they should still own black people.
This is what happens when Karens weaponize the police.
When you're used to privilege, equality seems like oppression.
It hits you in a certain way when someone is holding you against your will, treating you like you're a criminal and you're an innocent person. This is something that black people face, no matter where they are.
A stronger black economy lends itself to a, a stronger, greater economy. Don't think it's exclusive of you, it's inclusive of you.
What's your beef with critical race theory?
It adds more fuel to the fire of the racist tendencies that we already have.
We have a general-
We have a generation of problem solvers that can remedy the problem if they are properly taught what the problem is.
You know, who created redlining in this country? The white liberal.
I, I don't give a damn who created it. If it's a racist policy, racist policy. Shelly, here's what I don't know. I don't know. See, there you go filibustering, brother. You scared of this truth, but you gonna get it though.
I've been a fan of TYT, I believe for the last six years.
Five years.
Three years now.
Seven years.
Four years now.
Two and a half years.
I just started because she got me into it.
My boyfriend actually watches it every morning and every night. So I kind of just started watching it with him and I love it. I mean, it's the only way that I find my news.
Looking through YouTube, looking for like, um, you know, political shows that look cool.
I came across a very angry rant from Jenk and that's when, that's when I knew.
So I was immediately in love with the show.
And then I had like, had to miss a live show or something.
10 times a day, I watch the show in the morning.
Whenever I had a bad day at high school, Young Turks.
Man, Jenk is just so blunt and honest and I love the honesty and there's no BS behind the news and they just tell everything like it is.
There's nobody censoring him. There's nobody there to say, you can't do this, you can't say that.
The feel of authenticity makes it seem like what they're saying is true.
I feel like I get the real story from the Young Turks.
I am TYT.
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 Welcome to the Damage Report. I'm John Idrola. This is gonna be a big one.
Meanwhile, in the Arctic, you know where this is going. You watch the Damage Report? The Arctic's on fire. Obviously, why would we be talking about the Arctic except to tell you that it's melting once again? The Republicans aren't that interested in it. I wonder why. Lift out of poverty up to 3.7 million people, including an estimated 1.3 million children. Hashtag save the children. Eh, not if it costs money. I mean, come on.
All right, there we go. Sorry about that. Good to be with you. We got a lot of viewer comments. Let's get to it. Uh, before I go to the comments, let me remind you. You have waited. It is here. Indisputable merchandise. Now, what do we have? Highly anticipated. I wish a Karen Wood t-shirts. We got male, female versions of these t-shirts. Very stylish. I'm being told it is the it thing right now. I need you to go to work tomorrow with an I wish a Karen Wood t-shirt. Pop a blazer over it. All right? Now here's the thing. If you see a Karen and you record a Karen with your I wish a Karen Wood t-shirt and you send it to me so I can talk about it on the I wish a Karen Wood segment, instant viral video. Remarkable. Make sure you go right now to shopTYT.com. Uh, big ups to everybody at TYT who made that possible. Um, we went through a lot of back and forth to make sure we came up with a design that I think you all will absolutely love. Okay? So I got I wish a Karen Wood and we also got they won't stop, I won't stop. Um, they won't stop, I won't stop tees are on there as well at shopTYT.com. Go ahead and make sure those fly off the shelves. All right? Um, we're now with podcasts. So wherever you get your podcasts, Acast, Apple Podcasts, et cetera. Make sure you download the podcast, download the app, like the podcast, follow the podcast and give us five stars. Take us anywhere. All right? And you will never miss another episode. Even if you have a long road trip, you're gonna enjoy the bullpen. I wish a Karen Wood and everything else. All right? And big announcement. My dear sister, Senator Nina Turner is now here. TYT Network, I'm so happy to have her greatness with us. Former Ohio State Senator Nina Turner is joining TYT and she'll be joining me right here on Indisputable every Thursday as a guest co-host. Make sure to tune in. Nina Thursdays. The Conversation, don't forget, watch The Conversation live today. 5:30 PM Eastern Time, 2:30 PM Pacific Time at TYT.com forward slash live. That's right before the Young Turks. Jenk gets into a heated debate with conservatives over vaccine mandates. It's priceless, y'all. You gotta see it. All right? Uh, make sure to subscribe and watch all interviews at youtube.com forward slash TYT Conversation. Let's get to the comments. Uh, Eric the Red, your energy and dedication to, to duty is admirable, doctor. Thank you and we love you too. Thank you. I love y'all. Thank you so much for that. Mickey C, the Silver haired dragon. Uh, welcome back, Dr. Richard. We missed you, but you really should be more careful about who you choose to sit in for you. The combo of JR and David was rocking and we were rocking with them. Given that your twisted sense of humor is like ours, we're so looking forward to you being Loopy. Thank you for both. All right? Is this Elaine Funky Cold Medina? Uh, oh, Dr. Richard, we love you for coming back a day early. Uh, we're all going to have to buy your t-shirt for that. You don't stop, I won't stop. That's the spirit. Thank you for that. Um, happily back says, uh, the Health Minister of Trinidad responded to the swollen, you know what? Uh, what a time to be alive. Really is. Just imagine if you're a politician having to address your nation about that. Okay? Keeta Boo forever. Hey doc, I keep coming across stories I think you find interesting. How should I share them with you? I've tagged you on TikTok on a few. You're great as usual and I hope you get some rest tonight. Thank you for that. Uh, do me a favor. So I'm not actually active on TikTok. I'm all over TikTok. I had no idea I was all over TikTok until, uh, my longtime executive assistant brought it to my attention because she's on TikTok, right? I have an account, but I'm not really active. So if you want to get a story to me, I want you to email me at richie316@gmail.com. R I C H E Y three one six at Gmail. All right? Um, full metal dragon, thank you for that. Andrew Finn Lason, the BLM protests taught more about my privilege, a great understanding of what terror from people I had to trust to protect me felt like. Yeah. Um, is this Dane? Wow, welcome Senator Nina. That's right. Thank you for that. All right, let's get a couple from Twitch. Uh, Yeetwood Matt, guys, I can't with this story. My heart is in pieces. Agreed. Dungeon underscore master underscore I am sock. Uh, cop ganda, copper ganda is gross, but this takes the cake. Yeah. They created chaos and then tried to benefit from the narrative. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I wish a Karen Wood.
You want to call the police on him for having a barbecue on a Sunday?
I feel free. Back off.
I'm gonna tell them there's an African American man threatening my life.
Hey, can you not do that? Can you not do that? Hey, can you let go? Can you let go? What are you doing?
Every Black lives matter, not, not the ones who are criminals, who are watching.
All of them, all of them, all lives matter. You're a Christian woman.
No, all Black lives matter. Yes, not just the hoopla. You know who heads that up? And you know who's-
I'm holding up this flag right now. I'm holding up, I'm holding up this flag right now.
You know who's in charge of-
I'm holding up this flag. Because I believe Black Lives Matter.
Do you know who represents BLM?
It's 2021. It's 2021 and you're holding up a Trump 2020 flag, uh, shirt, okay? What are you talking about?
Do you know who runs the Black Lives Matter? They're terrorists. You don't know who you're, you don't know who you're representing. All Black Lives Matter, not them.
I don't care.
No, from the womb to the tomb.
You can stop talking. I don't care what you have to say.
You should care.
No, I don't. Brett, get control of yourself and let go of my flag. Let go of my flag, lady. Lady, lady, let go.
You should get informed about who's supporting-
Lady, lady, you need to get control of yourself.
I wish you would-
Be an adult. Be an adult.
I, I don't, I'm not gonna stop him.
You're an adult. You have kids? You're an adult. Half life point. Half life point. Half life in adult.
Oh, sad.
Yeah, Donald Trump Karen, uh, this is sad. So while you're calling Black Lives Matter terrorist, you're wearing the name of a terrorist on your shirt. Donald Trump radicalized domestic terrorists to attack the US Capitol. Number one. Number two, um, you claim to be a Christian woman. And this always takes the cake for me. Because I guess her Christianity gives her even added privilege to tell you what lives matter and what lives do not. Because she clearly said, no, 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 no. You know, black people matter, but not those black people and not criminal black people. No, no, those lives do not matter. Um, madam, I want to remind you that in your Christianity, Jesus or Yahshua is a man of color. Number two, he was noted as a criminal. He had a warrant for his arrest and was captured by the authorities. So based on your definition of what lives matter and those that do not, Jesus, who you proclaim to be your Messiah, would not have mattered to you if he were here today. Okay? Also, according to the journalist Kyle Land, uh, people were riding by screaming homophobic slurs to the protesters. This individual was berated, obviously. You see what happened there? Doc, why do people do this? Why does she commit an act of criminality herself by physically accosting this peaceful protester?
You know, it, it's a high bar to, to reach the, above the bar Karen, um, level. And she, she hit every, every note. I mean, part of what it was, was, um, you know, it was, it wasn't just the tone, the kind of all knowing tone, but it was, it was so condescending. I mean, I'm, it's just so hard when people say, oh, I'm, first of all, I'm doing this for your own good. I'm doing this to protect you. There are things that I know that you don't know. So here's somebody out there supporting Black Lives Matter. And she has the audacity to come up and say, I know things about them that you don't know and only if you knew what I knew. So it's, I'm wanting incredibly condescending in a particular way in, in, in that regard. And then just this whole idea of kind of terrorism being thrown around, you know, this idea that basically, oh, there are nice black people and then there are these terrorists. And drawing that line, it's just, um, I, I, I mean, I, you hardly even know what to say anymore, except that the logic itself is so all encompassing that, um, you know, I, I, I think you hit the nail exactly on the head with that.
Yeah, it's quite interesting, fascinating. We will continue to highlight Karens because Karens are in fact dangerous. Let me shift gears. I want to highlight this story because it gives us a very pure opportunity to have insight into the psychology of others. Okay? This person was not putting on for a camera. This individual was, was not pontificating on a news program. This person was at a bar saying what he felt was true. Okay? Here's the video.
It's a very sort of something. Okay? You want to stick a needle in your arm? You can do that too.
Honey, you relax.
Very sort of something for me. Thanks, man. The way I've seen the world go down is disgusting. And no one's talking a lot about it. Don't come and stop talking about it.
He did not-
Because no one's talking about it and it's disgusting. And no one wants to talk about it. Everyone.
Stop. No one's talking to you.
You're right.
So shut up.
I know, everyone shut up. Everyone shut up.
No, you shut up.
No, I am shutting up. Everyone else shut up too. Everyone else shut up too. I know, no one else is talking. Exactly.
Honey?
Stop right now. You're causing me to, you're causing me to talk more. Because no one else is talking. Exactly. It's-
Enough.
And everyone knows it. It's maiming and killing people. You want something?
No, honey.
I'd rather do heroin than I'd, I'd rather put a vaccine in my arms. I'd rather take a shot of heroin. Honestly, God. I'd rather take a shot of heroin.
That is the start of talking, stop.
No, stop. I'd rather take a shot of heroin. At least I know it's heroin. Oh, sorry. Are you good? I didn't say nothing. Dude, please stop. No, you, no, I'm not stopping.
He did not tell you anything about-
No, but he brought that up and I hate the fact that he brought that up. Can I apologize to breathe it up? Yes. Thank you.
He did not tell you-
I know, but I know, but you brought the fact that I don't know what you're telling me.
He said if we wanted to go to Cabo and he would-
No. No, I will not be wearing a mask anywhere.
I know. It's good.
Nor will I be getting tested.
Okay, we're good.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you. It just gets my blood boiling. The sadness, dude.
Look at me.
Yes, I love you.
Look at me. Stop.
Disgusting.
Stop. Stop.
Okay, I know first appearances, this guy's anti-vax and anti-mask, right? But it's deeper than that. Okay? He said that he'd rather do heroin. He, he said this like four or five times. Okay? He made it real clear that he, he'd rather do heroin than take the COVID vaccine. And then I find it quite interesting as to why. He says the reason is because he knows what's in heroin. Right? Now listen, I don't know what's in heroin. I can research it. I can Google it and I can tell you what it says. I don't know what's in it. You know why I don't know what's in heroin? Just off the top of my head? Because I don't use it. That's why. But if you do use it, you probably know what's in it. Or if you have used it before, you are likely aware of all of the ingredients and everything involved. I, I'm just speculating here. Okay? Now, here's what I want to do. Because I think there's a deeper story here that we must analyze. And that's why I have a psychiatrist on the show today. I think it's important that we listen to the heart of people rather than their words. Okay? Now, his words are saying, I don't want COVID-19 vaccinations. His heart is saying, I would like heroin. Doc, am I wrong here? Am I, is that too much of a leap here? The doc said it like five damn times. He wants some heroin.
Well, and also he's drinking rosé in a bar, right? So it's like, stuff like this gives rosé a bad name, you know? It's just an innocent bystander here. But yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, this was like one of these like kind of, you know, naked moments, right? This guy did not know he was going to be on, on television and, and now he is, right? And so it was, it was a pretty interesting moment. I mean, certainly, I think one thing that's important about this, about this is this idea[1671.05] this idea that heroin's been around for centuries, but this vaccine is, you know, the anti-vax movement likes to call it an experimental vaccine. Now, I can't tell you how untrue that is. Actually, the technology that's in the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines, the vaccines we use in this country, have been tested for 20 years against different viruses. They were part of an unsuccessful HIV virus, a bunch of other viruses. So these vaccines have been tested. And one of the things we need to push back on is like, this is just some new technology that was invented yesterday. That's absolutely not the case. I would dare say there have been many more clinical trials of the RNA technology in these vaccines than there have for heroin, right? And so these vaccines have actually been probably more tested than heroin. But I do also think that you're right, that it's important to look on a deeper level. What are the fears that people bring to this? I mean, why are people so afraid of the vaccine? What is it about a mask that is so upsetting? And I think part of it, as you can hear here, is it's not just about the science. That was a little ridiculous. It's also about being told what to do, having your quote unquote freedom and liberty taken away from you. But this guy, I don't know. The way she talked him into getting the vaccine was to go on a trip to Cabo, apparently. So if that's what it takes, you know, let's all go to Cabo and get vaccinated or something. But again, I think you're right, that it was a moment that kind of we got to see into the kind of the logic or the false logic that people apply when they're being told what to do and in this case, get a vaccine.
Yeah, that's a great analysis, Doc. Or he just wanted some heroin. Yeah, okay? All right, we got more on the other side. It's indisputable. Stick and stay.
I'll predict right here for you, Chris. I think Donald Trump will leave office before his term is up. He'll be humiliated, embarrassed, and I know him. He's not going to want to lose and he's going to run for the hills.
You got that bet all day long.
Okay, let's get after it. Now, so look, Jake has made some good predictions and you know, this is most, this is in good fun. I could not disagree more.
There's a little bromance between the two of them. You got that bet all day long, Jakey U. You know, you stop. In the meantime, let's call him out on the damage.
I just got a Roku set. Did basically a little bit of channel surfing. And I was like, there we are. There we are. And then I turned it on and it was John and Brett on Damage Report making fun of me.
Oh, my. So you are so busted. I even took a picture of it, okay? They're talking about my predictions? I got a new prediction for you, John Idola.
You're doing a show that's blowing the doors off everybody.
Young Turks is the largest online news network. Not a big deal.
We're going to rock the boat. We're going to be counter-establishment. We're going to tell people the truth to the best of our abilities.
We're so sick of this corruption.
We're not the robots on TV.
I actually care about the news.
Guilty, guilty, I care.
Fourth day on Occupy Wall Street. Last night, we launched Wolf Pack.
It's us pushing our ideas out there, trying to help the country in every way that we can, trying to make this place just a little bit better.
Reporting from the Hillary Bernie debate. I gotta be honest, you know what we do? We cover for real.
For us, this system isn't working.
Free! And fair! Elections!
And when he told the cops that day, when they came to drag her away, and he said, if you're going to chain her, you're going to chain me. If you're going to arrest her, you're going to arrest me.
Hi, I'm Bartholomew Joseph Kyle. I do audio for the main show, The Young Turks. I also do audio for Postgame. I started in 2006. I met Jank Yuger at the Iraq For Sale screening that was directed by Robert Greenwald. And watching that, I want to figure out a way to be part of something that's genuine and authentic.
Welcome back. It's indisputable. We got a lot of comments. Let's get to it. Thank you all for always engaging. Jesse anti-racist says, Dr. Ritchie, my 19-year-old son Kendrick really admires you and his favorite segment of your show is, I wish your Karen would. He saw your Karen shirt and immediately asked me to get it for him for Christmas. Listen, you're obviously mom of the year, okay? Thank you for that. Progressive Lady Chef, Dr. Ritchie, have you seen the Lincoln Project's Ivermeckin commercial ad on YouTube yet? If not, it's priceless, I promise. I've seen it and it is. They, when I tell you they have an amazing marketing team, all of their commercials are spot on, all right? Kelly O'Hara, my poet. All right, let's get it. The Trumpists were big mad, signed their petitions and went after Gavin with great admonitions. The man that they chose for repeal and replace tripped over his feet and fell flat on his face. Let's break out the juice, ice vodka and blender and cheer altogether. Down goes Larry Elder. I love it. This was, she says, this was my last one about him, Doc. I promise, I wrote it on Friday hoping it came true. Or Kelly, it came true because you wrote it on Friday. All right, thank you for that. Bars, YouTube Super Chat. Bernie the Kiwi Dragon, maybe it's because I just got off my train, but Trump supporters all like stand behind the yellow line on the platform and tell other people to. Problem is, they're always facing the wrong way. Sticks Dragon Sharon. My father is named Ken. He is a Karen. I'm so sad I'm related to him. Few words, but we get the message. Vitangale, she has to stroke his ego to get him to behave. Right, she was like, oh, I know. It was like, you know, talking to a toddler. Oh, I know, I know, I know. Husky One Dragon, why should he care what she's saying? Why should he care what she's saying? She clearly doesn't understand what he's saying. Yep. Frankie underscore Z13. His words are saying, I've had too much wine and Fox News. That's what it is. That's where it's hard to say. All right. One of the saddest stories you'll ever hear. 12-year-old kid killed because a cop broke protocol and did a pit maneuver against an entire family, basically. Let's show the picture of this 12-year-old young man who was killed. Leaden Boykins. This happened in Georgia. 12-year-old boy was killed in a vehicle crash that occurred when a Georgia state trooper used a pit maneuver to end a high-speed chase. It gets deeper. The young man was a passenger in the car being driven by his neighbor, a 35-year-old Charlie Moore. They were close, the family was close, while Georgia state troopers chased the vehicle on September 10th. That gives you some background. Now, I also partially blame the driver. Don't miss that, okay? I do. Also blame those who took an oath to protect and serve. Also blame the cop who engaged against this car contrary to department standard and protocol. And now a 12-year-old kid is dead. I'm going to give you background. Mr. Moore, along with this young, along with his young son, were giving Boykins a ride home when they were pulled over at 1:00 AM for speeding. However, Mr. Moore refused to lower his driver window or produce any type of identification. That's according to the police statement, okay? The unnamed trooper called for assistance and a deputy responded and broke Moore's window. Moore, a black male, allegedly told authorities he was a sovereign citizen and drove away and led police on the chase. Moore was reportedly afraid of what the encounter with the police might turn into and tried to call 911 during the chase so sheriffs could intervene. It gets deeper. The pursuit continued, okay? At a high rate of speed and the driver was driving recklessly, that's according to the report, the trooper terminated the chase by using the pursuit immobilization technique or pit maneuver. The Kia exited the roadway and overturned in a ditch. The rear seat passenger was unrestrained and suffered fatal injuries. Moore and his 14-year-old son were treated for minor injuries. During the chase, Moore was on the phone with 911 saying, I am afraid, I'm afraid for my life, he told the dispatcher. They need to get them off me right now, the driver said. Because I'm scared, I got my kids with me right now. After the car was forced off the road, you can hear Moore screaming at the young man who was dead. He died of those injuries. The Georgia State Patrol, they brought murder charges against the driver. I have no beef with that, by the way, not, at least not right now. The beef I have is why have you not brought murder charges against the cop? According to Georgia State Patrol's chase policy, let's put that chase policy up. Troopers are supposed to consider several variables when doing the pit maneuver, including if children are in the car and must consider several methods of stopping a vehicle before performing a pit maneuver. No evidence of that happened. The family said that no one from law enforcement notified them that there had been a crash and they are not sure who identified this 12-year-old's body. Okay? You have an adult named Charlie Moore making a unwise, making an unwise decision, bad decision. He may have benefited for his life. I still don't think it was the right move, but we absolutely know that what the cop did was against policy. That's the absolute wrong move. You do not do a pit maneuver of a vehicle that you are aware that children are inside of. That is reckless disregard for life. That is a criminal issue. No, that's not what Georgia says. Doc, how do you see this?
You know, it's such a tragedy on so many levels. I'm actually writing a book right now about a case very similar to this. And so I have a lot of thoughts, more than we can go into today. And first of all, let me just say there's much more to this story than what we know. But I will say, just based on what we know, there are all these layers, right? On one hand, the driver doesn't roll down his window and then interestingly claims sovereign citizenship, which we can talk a lot more about that, but that means something very particular. It's something that has white supremacist history, but also history of kind of, you know, a kind of fascist politics history. So why did he claim sovereign citizenship? Why didn't he roll down his window, those factors? That's part number one. Then part number two is, you know, I can just tell you that you're exactly right. Cops stopped doing high-speed chases and it's against policy, certainly here in Tennessee where I am and pretty much across the country, for this exact reason, right? The yield of high-speed chase was hardly, it wasn't like in the movies where, you know, you get smoking and the Bandit or something like that. There were accidents in high-speed chases. Innocent motorists, children, pedestrians. So police stopped doing maneuvers like this pretty much across the board. And the other thing is, you can track the cars from helicopters. And there's other ways to do it. And so, and ultimately, the last part, of course, is the ultimate innocent victim, just a kid who was just picking up a ride home, you know? Didn't have any part of this. And ultimately, you know, that's the ultimate tragedy is, you know, just that a young person's life has been ended because of these reckless actions.
Something I say all the time, Doc. You can have a policy in writing, but if you have culture that's adversarial to that policy, culture will eat policy alive any day. So they have the right policy in writing. They say you can't do this, according to the state troopers in Georgia. They got it in writing, but the culture is antithetical to what's on paper. Next story. A group of anti-maskers, this was really insane. They took over a school board meeting and declared themselves newly elected. This was in the San Diego area. Let's just go to the video.
I have not been a member of any party or organization holding or otherwise advocating or supporting government in the United States or the state of California.
You guys can go home. You're finished.
I will not advocate or become a member of any party or organization holding or otherwise advocating overthrowing the government in the United States or the state of California by force or by law.
Woo!
Yeah.
Sorry, Thomas, stand up, please.
Sorry, word is not tied to me.
Okay, well, I need to, you guys, did you guys see this?
No, they need to vacate because they actually have lost their jobs. So this is the new board?
They walked out.
They need to leave. So.
And they didn't adjourn, so.
So we're good.
Okay, listen, the real school board members had left, okay? These people disrupted, they entered the meeting, they left. These individuals said, oh, no, they vacated. And we must now declare ourselves the new school board. Now, listen, I have never seen this level of privilege in group activity before. You literally can bypass a democratic process, voters and every other rule of law imaginable, and just make yourself a school board member by pure privilege and determination. Here's what the, I guess, president, the new president of the school board, here's what this guy said.
So we entered the building peacefully. We refused to leave and we demanded accountability from the Powell Unified School District Board. And the board vacated their seats tonight, which we then brought in a constitutionalist who, we held a quorum and we voted in a new board. You are looking at the new president of the Powell Unified School District, apparently?
We're not really sure what move is next, but we'll be reaching out to news organizations and doing a press release to let people know what happened and to dispel the rumors and misinformation that was spewed by the Powell Unified School District Board, which by the way, these people acted like absolute, I'm going to say it, jerks. They wouldn't look us in the face. They acted above us. And this is going on all over the country. We have people that are representing us, that are supposed to represent us and they're not representing us. And this is taxation without representation. This is how the American Revolution started the first time.
Sir, taxation without representation, you just got elected without voters. So come on, man. All right, Doc, we got like one minute. What's your thoughts and tell people how they can follow you?
You know, what's going on with school board meetings now? You know, it's, they used to be just do the business, you know, order the textbooks and stuff like that. So, you know, I'll just tell you, I'm here at Vanderbilt. We have a mask policy. It actually is fantastic for education. People are much more able to engage. It's actually much more effective in terms of just keeping the community safe. And so if they were protesting masks and all that kind of stuff, which looks like what they were doing, you know, ultimately, it's just antithetical to what actually is an effective school environment right now, which is people all looking out for each other's health and creating a safe environment. So I just want to highlight that the opposite of this is what other people are doing to promote public health in schools, which is important. I'm, you know, follow me on Twitter. I'm always there. Working on a new book, After Dying of Whiteness, my last one. So much more to come. But it's just always great to have these conversations, so important.
Brother, always great to have you. You always do a great job. And let me just say this for the record. That is not the new school board. Okay, all right. We got more on the other side. Stick and stay.
You know, old schools pitched to me from Jank. It'll just be me, you, Jesus, Ben, and maybe Michael. And we're like, okay, cool. I can do that every week.
As you can see, me, Jesus, Ben.
When you make the order, it says, you know, don't exceed $20.01. So I'll just order literally anything to get it as close to that as I possibly can.
I'm sorry that I ordered $45 worth of food and got an email saying, sir, would you like to refagn?
I was in hell. I was just like, oh my God, the theater's empty. Nobody's here. Everyone on screen keeps fucking cursing. Why did I let this happen? And the whole thing looks like it was shot through a glass of milk. My mom's going to be so mad.
If you're looking for a heart attack, the short wave, baby.
Wrong. I did put mayonnaise on it. I'm the most in shape overweight person you'll find.
That's right.
He was like, why didn't you answer my call? I called you 39 times.
But what makes you stop right before 40? You know, what makes you say, nah, man, I ain't doing that no more. I'm cool.
And I called you back on the air. And I was like, okay, Kevin Smith, big shot. What the fuck? You said you'd come on and you didn't come on.
I'm sure I took that very well.
Yeah, you did. You called me back the next day and said, I thought it was 7:00 AM.
And there's now deep fake porn. I don't know if you guys have heard of this.
Heard of it. I just had some in the car.
I'll tell you who I'm not fucking, Ben McElwes.
Have you guys ever felt that?
Not ever.
And now it's just the three of us.
It's a bit out.
By the way, the last half hour of this, we're not even rolling.
See, I watch movies.
I'm down with both of you.
Once Greg starts laughing, I can't stop. And I was just gonna ask you about getting high.
Snugans, snooty boochies.
And members, of course, you can get the whole damn thing. TYT.com, join and pre-trial.
Old school with the old folks.
John, come back.
He'll go here.
It's time to switch to.
Oh, man.
Oh, God.
Do your best.
He's a little like.
No one's happy now.
Give him another try.
Wow.
This is the weirdest game.
I'm Brett. I would like to refer to this segment as the Do I Still Have This Talent show? So I want to see if I can play harmonica without my hands. I don't know why I have that, nothing's gonna be more impressive than that. I can also spin a basketball on my finger. While drinking. I'm gonna spin a basketball on my finger while drinking apple juice. You can do this, dude. It's also flat. I don't know if that helps or hurts. And it seems to be somewhat wobbly. Ta-da. Nope, I don't know how to do this one. This one's a fail. Nope. Oh, God, I'm so mad.
All right, welcome back. It's indisputable. We have a lot of show left, okay? Let me read some of the viewer comments. Before I get to that, just remember that Indisputable merch, the merchandise is here. All you gotta do is go to shopTYT.com, shopTYT.com. And you can find all of the merch. There we got, I wish you Karen Wood. Let's put that picture up. Beautiful stuff, okay? Got the holidays coming up, all kind of great things happening. Also, they won't stop, I won't stop. Tees are available as well. ShopTYT.com. Indisputable can now be enjoyed on podcast, wherever you get your podcasts from, Acast, Apple, whatever. Make sure you download the podcast. Follow, hit like, give us five stars if you like the programming. Thank you in advance. Also, my sister, Senator Nina Turner, is now right here, TYT Network. She will be on Indisputable every Thursday. That's Nina Day, all right? Looking forward to it. Do not forget to watch the conversation live today, 5:30 PM Eastern Time, 2:30 PM Pacific Time, TYT.com/live. That's before the Young Turks. Jank gets into a heated debate with conservatives over vaccine mandates. Hey, it's exciting, all right? Make sure you watch, go to youtube.com/tytconversation. Let me read some of these comments. We got a lot of them. I can't get to all of them, but thank you in advance for sending them. Craig Sufle says, taxation with representation? How about relearning Schoolhouse Rock? YouTube Super Chat. John Hemstater? Hemstater, maybe? Kelly O'Hara and the Good Doctor. King T. How said, Doc, only 12 years old? That's right, only 12, okay? And the cop knew the rules and broke them. Non-applicable says spiked strips? Right, simple, okay? All right. Sassy Jazzy Spitfire Dragon, it's my dragon birthday. I'm no longer just a subscriber, I'm a new member now. Congratulations, and thank you for being so supportive. Twitch, and you're right. Melanid44 says the cops did a pit maneuver on a pregnant woman as well. That's true. Very sad. But we highlight these stories to tell the truth, okay? Because ultimately, the truth will set us free. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the bullpen. Let's get it in the bullpen today. We got Brad Palumbo, fee.org correspondent, National Review contributor. Brad, good day, welcome.
Hey, thanks for having me. And I just have to say, I love your Wish a Karen Wood segment. Left and right, we should all agree that Karens are out of control.
Damn it, I'm glad we could start on that note, brother. I appreciate you saying that. Yes, Karens are dangerous for all of us out here. All right. We are going to chop it up about social policy or socialism, the Biden, as it has been termed, vaccine mandate, and maybe a couple of other things as it relates to unemployment benefits from the federal government. So let's start with the so-called vaccine mandate from the Biden executive order. We'll start with the one everybody talks about, and that's the private sector one that impacts those that have 100 employees or more. I don't want to presume what you know or believe about that particular subject, so I will give you an opportunity to express your sentiment, and I will respond.
Yeah, I think the Biden vaccine order pushing companies to require it or require weekly testing, I think it's just unjustified because there is no externality anymore. Anybody who wants to take the vaccine can. I am not at all anti-vax and pro-vax. I got the Pfizer vaccine as soon as I could. But importantly, it protects you from hospitalization or death. 99.9 plus percent accuracy, very effective vaccine. So President Biden said that we need this mandate to protect the vaccinated from the unvaccinated. He said that in his speech, but that doesn't make any sense because the vaccine protects the unvaccinated. So I think the mandate is an infringement on people's bodily autonomy, and I think it's not justified because there's no externality. I also think it could backfire, and it could lead more people to really dig in and become more vaccine resistant.
All right, so I understand your point of view, and I had to do some research on this as well, because I would say, listen, the vaccine is for you, the mask is for me, okay? But here's what I've learned in the field of study, which science is a field of study, and you take the majority of the studies and you put them together, you say, okay, here's the consensus of scientists. The consensus is that you have to get the population to a certain threshold vaccination rate in order to stop massive mutation of the virus and this virus becoming more endemic than pandemic. And in order to do that, you have to get a level of buy-in or a threshold percentage of the demographic, and we're getting close. One poll showed that we're at over 70% of individuals that have either gotten the, you know, one vaccination or both, okay? So you're getting to that number. But that's the reason, that's the why. He did a horrible job explaining that. And also, the issue of this being a mandate is not a mandate. There is no COVID-19 vaccine mandate under this particular executive order. It is a COVID-19 vaccine protocol, not a mandate. Literally, the protocol says either A, you can get the vaccine, or B, you cannot get the vaccine and simply be tested. And it only applies to employers that have 100 employees or more. And it provides provision in the executive order that says companies have to pay you if you're willing to get the vaccine. They must pay for your time that it took for you to get it. And if you have an adverse reaction to the vaccine, they must pay for your time away from work because, like all vaccines, some people will have an adverse reaction because they may be allergic to something inside of the vaccine. This is something that we know is commonplace with all vaccinations in America and beyond. But my issue, not really issue, my question to you is, do you believe that the COVID-19 protocol is an intrusion on a liberty of an individual or a business? And I think the root of my question really is, do you find it unconstitutional?
Well, I won't wade into legal matters because I'm not a lawyer. I'll just tell you what my view of the policy is, and a couple of things I want to respond to that you just mentioned. First and foremost is that it is, it is a narrow order in some sense, but it still applies to upwards of 80 million Americans that work for companies that apply to it. So it's still a big deal, even if you're right that it only applies to companies with over 100 employees. The other thing is that weekly testing is an option. That is factually true, absolutely. But that's actually really expensive for a company to test thousands of employees every single week when tests cost hundreds of dollars, and it's a pretty cumbersome process. So you are definitely giving them some alternative to the vaccine mandate, but it's not a very appealing one, and it's very expensive. So I think a lot of businesses are going to tell their employees, you must get vaccinated or you're fired because of this government order. And that's a very problematic position, in my view, because I do think it's a question of their bodily autonomy and their individual freedom. I mean, you're talking about forced injections, injecting people against their will. I think we should try to convince people, not coerce them. And just one other point about the variants that you mentioned. I agree with you that COVID variants are a problem, of course, but I don't think a few million people that will be affected by a mandate here or there in the US will make a difference because whether we like it or not, it's really sad and tragic. But there are going to be billions of unvaccinated people across the world who are going to stay unvaccinated for years to come. And the Delta variant came from India, where there's going to be hundreds of millions of people spreading COVID around, and variants are going to occur outside of our borders, and they're going to come here. It's impossible to stop, basically. So I don't think a couple million people forcibly vaccinated here in the US is going to make any difference about variants.
All right, so let's talk about your numbers first. You went from 80 million to a couple of million. You said it right.
Will be forced. A lot of people have already taken it.
No, no, remember, this impacts the workforce in a significant way, right? So you're coming up with a number, you say, okay, maybe a couple of million is the threshold. That number may be higher based on whoever you listen to, right? Whatever scientist says this is your threshold for this particular virus. The issue is, if you believe it is a violation of civil liberty, if it is too intrusive, then I go back to a fundamental argument, because I assume, were you born in the United States?
Yeah.
Did you go to school here?
Yes.
So you have vaccinations that were mandated by law inside of your body right now?
Most, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, everybody does. 100% of K through 12 education, they have required a vaccination regimen in order to attend public schools. 92% of private institutions require the very same thing. Some states have a couple of more, some states have a couple of less. I think the lowest state probably has six required vaccinations. The highest is about eight or nine, okay? But the bottom line is, these states have been able to enforce these mandates for decades for the safety, not only of the child with the vaccine, but also those around them. So if we're saying that somehow a forced vaccination, and you can definitely make the argument that a K through 12 vaccine mandate is more of a forced vaccination than what the executive order does, because it doesn't force anyone to get vaccinated, it says you have an option, I think you have to go back. If that is your intellectual argument, that vaccinations are too intrusive for the government to mandate, then you have to start some decades before today and make that argument about what has been longstanding, not only scientific practice, but what we call policy practice in the United States of America. The other point I will make is that I believe, and I've already sent this up the chain of command at the White House, okay? I do believe they need to make two caveats here. One, they need to make an exception for those who already have the antibodies, okay? Because that's actually the ultimate goal. If you had COVID, you survived, and you have the antibodies, there should be a protocol for that. I believe that. I think they need to add that to the protocol. Second, and this is a point you brought up, if the burden is upon the companies, because I know some companies, they got over 100 workers, they go up and down. They're not super, super wealthy. And when you're talking about a lot of people who would rather get a test every single week, and if you do it at your job, then that may be an additional cost, even if it's manpower cost. So if there's real cost involved, then there should be a subsidy reimbursement. However, the vast majority of places that do the testing, brother, they do it for free. And employees are able to obtain that test at no cost whatsoever every time they choose to take it. So you already have free options that are available, but if there's a cost of the company, I do believe there should be a subsidy reimbursement. So that's my pushback on some of those items. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I get what you're saying, but it's cumbersome for businesses to weekly test thousands of employees, and they're probably just going to say to a lot, a lot of these companies are gonna say, get vaccinated or get out. And so you're right that people don't have to get vaccinated, but if the choice is losing your livelihood, that is a pretty significant coercion still, I think.
And it's supposed to be, you know, and I want to say this, man, that's by design, right? It is designed to be. It is designed to be a significant push in order to get people vaccinated. I don't think they're hiding from that.
Why do we have to force? Why can't we convince them?
Okay, now, I think, I think that's a good point, that you, you want to convince people just to do the right thing, but I want to also bring you to reality. Go to a school board in Florida, Texas, okay? You can convince parents to allow their children to wear a face mask to school. They'd rather throw hands than throw on a mask, right? That's the level of immaturity and politicization you're dealing with as it relates to COVID-19. I know you and I agree that mask worn properly will decrease the spread of COVID. There's no debate with you on that, is it?
No, not really, but what I would say though is that if these people ultimately are risking themselves, not others, if you're stubbornly refusing to take the vaccine, well, everyone around you, all of your neighbors have had the chance to take it if they want to take it for free, and it is highly, highly effective at preventing serious illness and death, so it's inconsistent logic to say that we need to force people to take the vaccine or push them, push them because.
That's based on an assumption you're making. The assumption that you're making is that you will not get to herd immunity status. And, and it is an assumption, you're saying, listen, I, I just don't believe the 2 million or 3 million would do it. There are medical doctors and medical scientists and research scientists and infectious disease experts who believe that it will actually get you closer to herd immunity. So you can't just make the argument without consideration of the science or the science, the scientist who are making the opposite argument than your conclusion. Let me go to the.
The mandate doesn't, like you said, the mandate doesn't acknowledge natural immunity, and if you want to have a conversation about herd immunity, you've got to factor that in.
Yeah, I agree with you. It should factor in antibodies that you already have, correct? I agree. Now, here's the other part of it. It's a constitutional argument, because a lot of people, and I've seen headlines from CNN, Fox News, and everywhere else, that there are experts, legal experts and medical experts, saying that it's unconstitutional. Some say it is constitutional. Let me explain that, because I think it's a fascinating argument. OSHA is the regulatory agency that will implement basically the oversight of this, right? First of all, OSHA can't get to those throwing away tires at the back of a company, all right? So, so OSHA doesn't have the manpower, is my point. They don't have some massive manpower force. So what OSHA will likely do, brother, is they will spot check places that have an increased COVID-19 reporting matrix, and they'll go and make sure they start enforcing whatever the mandate is. That, that's kind of how OSHA works anyway. But it is constitutional. And here's how it's constitutional. You have something called the Commerce Clause. Article 1, Section 8, Clause 3 of the US Constitution grants Congress the power to create regulatory agencies to oversee or enforce rules or what's called administrative law as it relates to interstate commerce. OSHA was created as an act in 1970, based or with the authority of that particular clause in the US Constitution. So it is really by existence a constitutional expression. The only time people had issues with OSHA being really a constitutional expression of a congressional power is when we started talking about COVID. Now, and also, I think it's important to highlight that this OSHA oversight is temporary. It's called an ETS, okay? It is a temporary oversight procedure that can only last 100 days. It cannot exist outside of that 100 days without going through the proper bureaucratic process, which allows for public comment and everything else. But the ETS can be in place for 100 days if there's a substance, if there's a hazard that can impact workers on the job. That is your prerequisite for the ETS. Everything is within statutory requirement and everything is within the Constitution, the framework of the Constitution. So when people try to make an argument that what Joe Biden is doing is somehow antithetical to the Constitution, it doesn't add up with law or the Constitution, what they're saying.
So, look, I, I'm not a constitutional scholar. There are a lot of conservative scholars of high esteem who would disagree with you on this. It's complicated, it's not my expertise, but a couple of points I would make is that you're, so obviously, under past precedent, things like this have been upheld. OSHA has been upheld, but a lot of people would say those precedents are wrong. And one thing you said that I don't think is true is that people are only talking about OSHA being unconstitutional overreach now. Well, libertarian and conservative legal scholars have been talking about it for a long time, because the concerning thing is you're talking about Congress, you're talking about the Commerce Clause, but this isn't Congress. This is an agency that has this power delegated to them, that nobody elected OSHA bureaucrats. They're wielding, they're making laws unilaterally outside of the democratic process. Congress, if they want a mandate, should have to do it themselves and actually do their job in the Constitution.
All right, let me explain where you're wrong at, Brad, and I do encourage you to do the research. Article 1, Section 8, Clause 3 grants Congress this amazing power to create regulatory agencies that can oversee or provide oversight for interstate commerce. 1970, Congress decided to create OSHA in order to do just that. OSHA by statute, which its power is derived from the Constitution, they are able to create administrative law and workplace policy without creating new statutes that must be passed by Congress, because Congress already enacted that act in 1970, which allows OSHA to operate under the authority of the Constitution.
Government bureaucrats shouldn't be able to wield enormous powers without democratic accountability.
Well, remember, the ETS only can last for 100 days because of that very point you made. After 100 days, it does have to go through a public process in order to become a permanent administrative law or workplace policy. Brother, as always, man, it's enjoyable to have you on the show. My producers are telling me I'm out of time. Brother, thank you for coming back to the bullpen. Always a free, open and transparent debate.
I appreciate it. Have a good one.
You too. All right, ladies and gentlemen, remember, take care of yourself, take care of each other, take care of the planet. Remember, the truth is always indisputable.